Convening our 10:00 AM Committee on Health and Homelessness Agenda for Wednesday, March 20, 2024, we are in Conference Room 329. We have two agenda items members for this agenda. So we'll jump right into it. First up, we have Senate Bill 2322 relating to water quality. First up, we have testimony from, I believe, Department of Health.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair and Committee Members. My name is Darryl Lum. I'm the Program Manager at the Department of Health Team Water Branch. The Department of Health stands on our written testimony in support, and we have an offered amendment on the effective date of the measure, and I will be available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We have testimony in support from Surf Rider Foundation.
Aloha. Good morning. My name is Lauren Blickley. I am the HOVETE Regional Manager with the nonprofit Surf Rider Foundation. Thank you for hearing this bill today. We've been working as Surf Rider Foundation for about five years on this bill, and we're really glad that we could come to an agreement with Department of Health on a bill that they also support. And so with the bill that's before you all, it's a win-win for clean water, for public health and safety, and better all-around data for the health of our beaches. So if you guys have any questions about it, also happy to answer those. And thank you for supporting and passing this bill.
Thank you. Testimony and support from Y Waste Water Alternatives and Innovations. Testimony and support from Lisa Bishop, in support from Gabriel Saba Zimmer, Michael Ikem Older also in support. We have late testimony from Daniel Amato in support. Any other late testifiers in the room? Any other late testifiers via Zoom? Seeing non-members' questions, I have a quick question for Department of Health. And this is just because we don't often have these bills in front of us. What is a Tier One Beach?
So the Tier One Beach is beaches that have economic and social value to the state. The tiering was created for the purposes of this beach monitoring program. It was mainly created for the prioritization of our limited resources. So there's about 61 of these beaches statewide.
So as an example, does this include Waikiki Beach, Magic Island, Alamoana Beach?
Yes, it does. So those would be Tier One beaches.
Okay. What are the tier, like, can you identify important Tier One beaches on Maui and Big Island?
Let's see, Maui.
Anapali Beach on Maui.
Yep, that's correct.
Okay.
On our, I'm sorry, go ahead.
And then on Big Island.
See, Big Island.
Like Apuna Beach on the Kona side.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not really sure. In our beach monitoring document, we have all of the beaches that are listed out, and I'm sorry, my mind is kind of blanking right now.
Yeah. Okay, I'm asking this question in part because I'm a little bit very, well, not just a little, I'm very interested, you know. I think Tier One beaches are important for, and the testing of Tier One beaches, especially when there are brownwater advisories, is so important because we have so many residents, tourists who are living, recreating, enjoying our beaches. And so to me, I mean, while I respect that you'd want to delay of the effect of this act, I am not actually inclined to grant that because I think, you know, if you had to go out for Department of Health and do a 30-day public comment period, why wouldn't you be able to get this up and running by December 31st of this year?
Okay, so we would have to renegotiate with EPA, the beach monitoring program. And then we would have to rewrite the beach monitoring document, and then it will have to go to public notice and public participation. So we're thinking, you know, after answering any public comments or anything like that, then we would need that 2025 date.
Okay, but in the testimony from Surf Rider Foundation. And I think we pulled up the list of all the Tier One beaches, which are very, you know, a lot of beaches where a lot of, not just tourists, I want to emphasize again, residents. I am a paddler. My paddling team is right at the mouth of the Olowai, and there are often a lot of brownwater advisories there. You know, I think I see in Surf Riders Foundation's testimony, it says EPA Region Nine has likewise recommended to the Clean Water Branch of establishing a protocol to test in brownwater advisories would provide much better and accurate data in regards to water quality. Have you already begun the discussions with EPA to amend your plans as needed?
We had initial discussions. We did mention about this bill. And we, I guess the discussions that we had were mainly involved involving the follow-up sampling. At one point, we were looking at different alternatives, like maybe making the follow-up sampling after the bacteria threshold is exceeded. We're looking at making it less frequent so we can do more beaches. But EPA had recommended that we keep the follow-up sampling at a daily frequency. But that's about as far as the discussions went.
Okay. Again, I think, you know, the importance of testing is critical for our residents. And so, you know, I appreciate that this bill has been offered by its introducers and grateful for the attention to this. But, members, any other questions? Go ahead.
For Surf Rider Foundation, I just wanted to thank you for what you do in my district. Kai Loa Manalo, I appreciate all the water sampling that you do there and testing.
All right, members, no other comments, questions? All right, let's move on to Senate Bill 2461. This is related to medical cannabis dispensaries and rules. First up, we have in opposition, Department of Health.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Liam Gimmon. I'm with the Office of Medical Cannabis Control and Regulation, representing the Department of Health. We respectfully oppose this bill and stand on our written comments. However, I would like to just highlight two points from our written testimony. Dispensary dispensary sales program has been, in fact, since July of 2023, 13 days after the enactment of Act 108. That time, licensees have successfully completed 13 sales, including three that were completed last week. One other sale has been requested this week, and that has been approved by my office. It is not, it is not undue hardship to expect our medical cannabis licensees to be able to monitor their inventory and plan ahead for these transactions. As for the amendment to 329D10, the legislature and this committee is well aware of the constraints already placed on my office. We are a small office tacked with many duties, but an enforced time constraint on rulemaking will force my office away from our other duties to the detriment of the health and safety of our medical cannabis patients and the public. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. We have testimony in support from the Hawaii Cannabis Industry Association via Zoom. We have testimony in person or from Pono Life Maui. Comments from Akamai Cannabis Consulting?
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Dr. Clifton Otto, offering comments on this measure, and I just wanted to add a few brief remarks. If we're going to be allowing patients to purchase pre-filled oil cartridges and pre-rolled marijuana cigarettes, which are intended to be smoked, I think we really need to also encourage patients to engage in safer ways of inhaling cannabis. And I'm talking about dry herb vaporizers. Our Medical Use of Cannabis Act, within the definition of medical use, mentions both cannabis and paraphernalia. But there is, I believe, some confusion over whether dispensaries can sell these devices. And so I'm offering language that I believe would address this so that dispensaries could sell pre-filled dry herb vaporizers, grinders, and dosing capsules, which can be put directly into a dry herb vaporizer for those patients who are challenged with manual dexterity. On a related issue, the governor has recently revealed that his office is having internal discussions about expanding the medical program by respecting the medical cannabis doctor-patient relationship. And what he's referring to is allowing certifying providers to decide what constitutes a debilitating medical illness for enrollment in our program. So I've included some language that I think would make this possible. So thank you for considering these suggestions, and I'll be available for any questions.
Thank you, Dr. Otto. We have testimony from Kira Oahu.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee, Jana Matila on behalf of Kira Oahu in support of SB 2461. Expanded wholesale between dispensaries would allow licensees to share manufacturing capabilities and specialized products, which in turn expands patient access to a variety of formulations, products, and strains without sacrificing safety and consistency. Additionally, we do support placing a timeline on rulemaking to allow for timely distribution of products. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and we respectfully ask that you pass this bill.
Thank you. Testimony and support from Hawaiian Ethos?
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, Members of the Committee. My name is Jeff Hong. I'm the Board Chair of Hawaiian Ethos, a medical cannabis licensee on Hawaii Island. And we're in strong support of this bill. From the AG's testimony yesterday, the ability to keep local ownership and control of our nascent cannabis industry is dependent on the federal government maintaining a Schedule I for cannabis. Contrary to popular belief, I know we are struggling financially, along with the majority of licensees. While adult use is debated, we need to strengthen our nascent local industry. The licensee community is already benefiting from this legislation. It has allowed specialization and economies of scales to begin. Our products are solventless, and we offer them to those on Maui and Oahu. We now provide products for availability on Hawaii Island that we cannot provide. Businesses need to plan the ability to wholesale on a consistent schedule agricultural products. We are sympathetic to the staffing issues at the Department of Health, and they have improved the process of approval of dispensary transfers. But the current emergency approval process is difficult to plan. After two years, we still do not have visibility on the approval of pre-rolls. This product is vital to our clients that have mobility issues. I speak in a personal capacity. As I said yesterday, I'm Chair of the Liquor Commission, and we're responsible for promulgating administrative rules on liquor. And it has been my experience that specific legislative intent is useful in helping to direct agencies to prioritize. This bill is explicit in its legislative direction for consistency for licensees to wholesale and to provide vitally needed products. We cannot waste this small window of time before large MSOs will be constitutionally allowed to enter our marketplace. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. We have testimony in support from Andy Kagimoto. Any other late testimony? Any other late testifiers in the room? Any late testifiers via Zoom, members, questions? Go ahead.
What is your, like, how long does it take from when you get a request for a wholesale transfer to when you approve it?
Usually within a week. So the request this week came in on Monday, and we orally approved it yesterday. However, my office's system was out yesterday, so the written reply will go out today, hopefully.
One more follow-up question.
Yep.
And then, did you read the testimony from Mr. Otto about the pre-filled dry herb vaporizers, all that stuff?
I didn't. I read through it on an earlier occasion, so I could review it.
Do you have an opinion on that? I, you know, personally, I feel like we should be minimizing smoke damage while people use this form of healthcare.
I think we are, the Department of Health and the Office of Medical Cannabis Control and Regulation is open to any type of process that will help diffuse damage to our patients. And yeah, we're willing to look into any type of possibilities and to see the benefits of that.
Thank you. Members, any other questions? Representative Kobayashi.
So your objection seems to be largely about requiring you to do rules. If that were stricken, would you support the bill?
You mean the time limit on the, on the bill?
On the, on the rulemaking.
Yes, I think we, yeah, we understand that when legislature passes a bill that we are held to it and we need to do it, the time constraint is what is causing problems for us just because we have so many duties going on and we need to prioritize. So yes.
So if the time constraint were removed, you're supportive of the bill?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick, any other questions? I have some questions.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry. And Liam, what's your last name?
Gimmon.
Gimmon. Mr. Gimmon. You have had two years to make rules for the pre-roll. Why hasn't it been done in two years?
I think that the pre-rolls were passed, were enacted in Act 108 of July this year. Am I correct with that?
2022, I thought it was.
I'm not sure. That was before my time, but I remember last year, Act, I believe it's 108.
Okay. So why has it taken this long?
We wanted to get out the rules for the dispensary dispensary sales, which is kind of ironic, we're talking about it again. We want to get those rules out right away because that is what the licensees were pushing for and they wanted, and that was going to help them in their businesses. We did have some hiccups with the pre-rolls, our understanding, our research into what was going on. Our rule-writing committee had some questions that we want to look into further. So instead of slowing down the whole process, we want to get the dispensary-to-dispensary sales rules out right away, and some other low-hanging fruits, like the two signs and other aspects of that, of Act 108.
Okay. Well, I'm sorry, I believe we actually passed the law for pre-rolls in 2022.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So there's been a two-year delay, and maybe that's not your fault, but certainly. And I think in previous, in previous hearings on this matter, you folks already have draft rules.
We do.
Okay.
Yes.
Can you, did you provide that to my office?
No, they haven't been approved by the, our, the Office of Medical Campus Control and Regulation and the Director of the Department of Health, so.
Okay, can, can the committee get a copy of the draft rules sent to us?
Sure, if that's allowed, if that's allowed.
Well, we'll request it.
Okay.
Because, you know, this delay is problematic for me. I respect that you folks might have a bias for not allowing for the smoking or vaporizing of this, but I will share with you that my father, when he was in hospice care, had the opportunity, and we were able to get a card for him, and to have him be able to have vaporized, because at that time, there was no pre-rolls.
Yes, ma'am.
To allow him to be able to do that and to see the comfort and relief he had. So while you folks say that you need to prioritize for the, for So while you folks say that you need to prioritize for the dispensaries, and I'm glad that you did that for the wholesale, but the continued delay on these other issues are actually impacting the patients.
Okay.
My father, had he lived past his time and been, you know, maybe going through hospice now, I would have liked to be able to be able to have him have the opportunity.
Yes, ma'am, we agree.
And so you guys have stopped this from getting into the hands of patients for two years because of your own bias, and that is not fair. That does not respect the legislative intent. So I am actually inclined to move this forward. Secondly, on the rules for wholesale dispensary, what is this limitation for emergency purposes only? Why are we not allowing more standardized practice of wholesale exchanged from dispensary to dispensary? Why do they have to ask every single time?
Because, ma'am, it is still legal federally. You know, cannabis is a controlled substance. It is Schedule I. This, the sale, the wholesale process, the vast majority of the sales are inter-island. When you have these processes, these transactions going inter-island, they come in contact with federal agents and federal agencies. We're trying to protect the state of Hawaii and protect our licensees and our patients by minimizing and giving as many protections as we can, so, with this process. So we do have a form, an application for this process. And as, you know, Representative Martin asked, we do get, return the form quickly, our decision, and all of our decisions have been positive with this, and try to get out there. But we do want to make sure that these transactions are, you know, following the rules, regulations, and making sure that they're not causing undue circumsect review by federal agents and agencies.
Okay. What I don't understand, though, is that once these transfers, and the whole, the idea, right, is to ensure if one dispensary on one island needs to get certain products from another dispensary, because that other dispensary has a manufacturing procedures, there should be a more regularized process.
There is.
And the fact that you're having them to come back to you every time, and it's not certain that it's going to be a one-week time limit, unless, can we put that into the rules or into the law?
It is, they request a month. So if they have an emergency request, of course, that's out. We do it right away and get approval for that. But the regular request for a regular transfer is a month, that they have to have a request from a month out. And we do allow, and we give a significant time and coverage for it, and we allow them to do that. And we have not, we allow our licensees to transfer products that they want. They are allowed to go after, or to develop products that they can do best and to buy products from other licensees for this transaction that they would not be able to make, or would not make as well as another licensee. So we do not limit that at all. The only thing that we're limiting is that they have to have an application, have to apply for each time that they do a transfer.
My concern is that there is a lot of unnecessary slow-walking of things. And that was not the intent of this. And so we'll look at this closely and continue to move this forward. I would like to see the draft rules for the pre-rolls. My understanding is that, you know, there is a lot of best practices that we could pick up, as noted in some of the testimony. You know, you have draft rules from Florida, Oklahoma, South Dakota. Your shop has been part of the, and in fact, helped create the regulatory association amongst states. So it's not as if you don't have the information already to act upon the rules that this legislature has asked you to pass on. Thank you, Mr. Gimmon.
Thank you, ma'am.
Members, any other questions, comments, or concerns? All right, members, we are going to recess until 11:30 for decision-making. All right, we are resessed on this agenda.
We will recess and re-notice for everybody. If you are on Zoom, please refrain from using any backgrounds with copyrighted images, which affects our YouTube videos. They could be removed. And if you could refrain from using the chat just to ask questions to the tech support people there. So we're taking up a number of resolutions this morning. For the resolutions with HCR and HR, we will be taking those measures up in tandem. So first up, we will be taking up HCR 5 and HR 1, urging retail stores and pharmacies doing business in the state to adopt a policy on national and local level, guaranteeing an individual's unhindered access to all United States Food and Drug Administration-approved contraceptives. First up, we have Aloha Care. Not present. AAUW of—oh, Aloha Care in support. AAUW of Hawaii in support. Legislative Committee of the Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. And a number of individuals all in support. Is there anyone who submits testimony in support wishing to testify? Seeing none, anybody else in the room who'd like to promote—to testify in this measure? Any members on Zoom? Thank you. No one to ask questions to members, so moving on to HCR 6, urging the members of Hawaii's congressional delegation to mon—oh. Sorry, also—sorry, before we move on, also in support from the Women's Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii. HCR 6. HCR 6 urging members of Hawaii's congressional delegation to monitor the Alliance for Hippocratic Medicine, the U.S. Food and Drug Administration, and take action to limit the case from further restricting access to safe abortion options. First up, we have Aloha Care in support. AAUW of Hawaii in support. Legislative Committee of Democratic Party of Hawaii in support, as well as the Women's Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii in support. And we have a number of individuals all in support, if any of them are present and would like to testify. Please. And if you could just state your name, so we can just make sure we have your testimony.
Aloha, my name is Ellen Awai. And I strongly support this bill because in 1973, because it was changed, I did have an abortion because I was raped by my boyfriend. And my intention was to go to college. Because I wouldn't be here today if I didn't go to college. But, yes, but in my mother's generation, you know, she had separated from her husband. She was a barmaid, and she had a child. But she tried to abort the child just because her husband wanted her back. But in what she did—I don't know exactly, but the child became deformed, and the state had to take over. So I strongly support this. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Any other members in the room wishing to testify? Any members on Zoom? Okay, great. Members, any questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next set of measures. This is HCR 71 and HR 56, requesting the Department of Health to convene a stakeholder working group to make recommendations to enhance meaningful access to health care in the state through the provision of language assistance services. First up, we have Department of Health.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Wanda Naionishi with the Department of Health. And the department supports the intent of HCR 71, which is to request DOH to convene a working group to make recommendations to improve language interpretation and translation services within health care settings. DOH acknowledges that limited English proficiency individuals and individuals with physical disabilities face barriers inequitably accessing health care when language and translation services are not provided. A 2023 meta-analysis found that LEP persons risk having poor perioperative care and outcomes. And another qualitative study published in 2018 in the Journal of Clinical Nursing concluded that language barriers in any country or setting can negatively affect nurses' abilities to communicate effectively with their patients and thereby have a negative impact on the provision of appropriate, timely, safe, and effective care to meet the patient's needs. And while Medicaid beneficiaries have access to translation services, it's the privately insured LEP persons, including those in the ALIS cohort, likely do not. And so a discussion of stakeholders in government, industry, and nonprofits convened by DOH is a prudent investment in assuring all Hawaii residents have a fair and just opportunity to achieve optimal health and well-being. And I thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Next, we have Office of Language Access.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of committee. I'm the Executive Director for the Office of Language Access. We stand on our written testimony in support of this measure. However, I would like to note that the resolution doesn't specify the composition of the working group. I think it would be beneficial if all the Quest Integration Plan Provider to be included in this working group because they are the key player to ensure that all the member in their network that—to adhere to and ensure the language access. Thank you for the opportunity to testify, and we will both for any question committee may have. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Next, we have Aloha Care via Zoom. Present. We have the Healthcare Association of Hawaii. Standing testimony, prior comments. Next, we have Hawaii Children's Action Network Speaks in support. Hawaii Primary Care Association. Testimony in support, thank you. We have Hawaii Coalition for Immigration Rights via Zoom.
Aloha Chair, Vice Chairs, and members of the committee. My name is Maria Valley-Hi with the Hawaii Coalition for Immigrant Rights. We are in full support of HR 56, HCR 71. Just a brief background about ourselves. We are a statewide coalition of immigrant and migrant-led and-serving organizations working to advance the full inclusion of, you know, immigrants and migrants in the state through advocacy effort. So during the COVID-19 pandemic, Filipinos and Pacific Islanders, including Kofa communities, were disproportionately affected. So that's why we were refounded, to address the urgent needs of communities, particularly focusing on the limited English proficient communities who compromised—or who comprised the groups that were disproportionately impacted during COVID. So earlier on, we recognized language access as a critical issue, stressing the necessity for comprehensive support and services to ensure equitable access to health care and other essential resources. Language as a barrier—to meaningful health care access has always been an underlying issue before, during, and now after the pandemic. So we believe that this resolution would address these disparities and improve health care outcomes for our communities. Thank you for allowing me to testify.
Thank you. Next, we have Waipahu Safe Haven Immigrant-Migrant Resource Center in support. We have Kula in support. Hawaii Appleseed Center for Law and Economic Justice in support. Hawaii Friends of Civil Rights in support. We have Hawaii Public Health Institute. Stand in support, thank you. We have the Hawaii Worker Center in support. And Kukua Kalihii Valley Comprehensive Family Services in support. We also have about six or seven individuals all testifying in support. If any of them are in the room, they are free to come and testify.
Good morning, Ellen Awai again. Prior to my mental health field experiences, I was a SLEP teacher, a second-language English proficiency teacher at Lillio Kalini Elementary. Okay, I had children from kindergarten to sixth grade, Filipino, Japanese, Chinese, and Shrek. But most of—all of them had siblings. So this is needed because the each sibling, one of them teach the other one. But they would go home and teach their parents English. And I was just basically teaching them cooking demonstrations to holidays, how to use a phone book, and we had dial phones at time. And, you know, yeah. So you can imagine that it's so limited, but some people don't get more education, and they're limited with that. And that's why in Hawaii, it was good that we, you know, spoke pidgin English and use our hands and everything. But using even family members to share stories at hospitals and stuff can be very dangerous for the child because they have to watch what they say. Otherwise, they could go home and be abused by their parents. So that's why it's needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room who'd like to testify? Any members of the public on Zoom? Seeing none. Oh, members, questions? No questions. Moving on to the next set of resolutions. This is HCR 116 and HR 97, urging the city and county of Honolulu to amend the revised ordinances of Honolulu as proposed in a bill by the Honolulu Youth Commission that creates a safe parking pilot program. We have testimony from Alice Lee, Council Chair from the County of Maui in support. Oh, no. This is—yeah, this is a—okay. Okay. Oh, well. Mis—misfiled testimony on the part of the county. Actually, I have nobody else listed for this resolution. Any members of the public?
Ellen Awai again. I travel outer islands, and I can't afford to pay for hotel rooms. So I rent a car, and I bond with my dog. But I noticed that Maui and Kauai, they allowed me to park in Safeway parking lots. That's why Safeway here at Poly, I guess, has so much homelessness there. But they have bathrooms, and it's easy accessible. Whereas Long's parking lot was crowded. You could see all the homelessness there, but they have no bathrooms. So yes, this is needed because, yeah, locals cannot afford—people coming in from the mainland cannot afford hotel rooms. And—but we can hopefully get a car, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room who'd like to testify or on Zoom? Seeing none. Moving on to the next set of resolutions. This is HCR 125 and HR 106, requesting the establishment of a telehealth working group to examine the impact of widespread telehealth adoption during the COVID-19 pandemic and identify public policy initiatives at the federal and state level to optimize telehealth utilization as the state transitions out of the COVID-19 pandemic. First up, we have DCCA.
Good morning. The department will stand up and give testimony for writing comments.
Okay, stand on comments. And next, we have the Department of Human Services in support. We have Queens Health System in support. HMSA—oh, sorry. Oh, please, yes.
I'm Dr. Matthew Koenig. I'm a neurologist at Queens. One call in the ICU, so I ran over my scrubs. These are not a prop. It's a common trope, right? Come over. I just wanted to say a few words. I'm the Medical Director of Telehealth for Queens, and I'm a strong advocate for expanding access through telehealth. We've had a unique experience during the pandemic. We saw a 65-fold increase in telehealth utilization. A lot of this was direct to patients in their homes on home computers and smartphones. I don't think it's an exaggeration to say that experience has been an experiment. There are instances of telehealth where we know that it benefits patients, like telestroke, where there have been clinical trials that show a proven benefit. But this widespread adoption across the state really has an unknown impact for many patients. And I think we have the data on what the outcomes have been in terms of clinical outcomes for patients and financial outcomes for payers. And it's really a matter of getting people together and looking at the data that we have to help inform our public policy going forward, both on the state and federal level, to determine how to optimize telehealth delivery to our patients in our state. So I—I think this is important and, you know, will allow the state to act in a convener role to get organizations together, including health care organizations and payers, to look at the data that we have and make sure that we have the best public policy as a state. So I—I ask for support on this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Koenig. HMSA in support. We have the Hawaii Health Information Exchange in support. Grassroots Institute of Hawaii in support. We also have testimony from the University of Hawaii Ecology and Social Sciences and the Social Science Research Institute, Health Institute of the Pacific Basin Telehealth Resource Center in support. That's all the written testimony received. Is there anyone in the audience who'd also want to testify?
The bills that you folks are doing is all for poor people. And I guess you guys don't experience it. This is Ellen Awai again. Okay, I change insurances quite a bit, and I've experienced all of them. Okay. When you go to a new one—and I just went to devoted, the brand-new one, only a couple of years old. And you have to wait till June or July to finally see your PCP. And so I had to get virtual, right? But the sad point is, most of Queens has the clinics that are calling new. But they don't bother to check the records when I tell them that I have devoted now. And so I have a bill for $292 for a virtual thing, and it stresses me out that I don't even want to see my bills anymore. So understand that when I do see the doctor, I'm being followed because I have my dog, and the security always question, yeah? And also to the bedside manners of the doctors need to be checked because they tell me—they're seeing me for the first time and saying, "What are you doing here?" You know, it's like, this is the first time I'm here, and you already sent me to all these labs and everything else. Yeah, I would like to talk to somebody. But just understand that, yeah, it has to be monitored. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Awai. Any one else in the room who'd like to testify?
Lauren Kim, Policy Officer for the Department of Health. We submitted late testimony. I'm sorry for the fact that it may not be in your files, but the department supports this and looks forward to convening stakeholders to keep telehealth on everybody's agenda and maximize its potential. So I'm very happy to convene this working group. Thank you. Oh, we do recommend an amendment that the resolution be amended to include that the group look at compliance to pass telehealth laws by plans and providers, and particularly by plans, just to make sure that they are—everyone has the same experience, that there is payment parity for in-person and telehealth visits. So otherwise, like I said, we look forward to convening this stakeholder group. Thank you.
Thank you. And can we just get another copy of the testimony if we didn't get it? It's to the clerk. Okay, thank you. Hi, please.
Hi, my name is Joan Kraft, and I happen to work with that guy, Dr. Koenig. So I've been working in this neuro ICU at one of our hospitals for about 26 years, and I watched when we brought telehealth in for the stroke patients. And if you take care of a patient who recovers from a stroke because they got the clot busters on time, and you take care of a patient who doesn't, the difference—that—I mean, you could talk about the impact on the economy, but just the impact on those people's lives. And when we, as nurses, you know, get a patient that recovers from a stroke, I mean, the unit is happy. Everyone's like high-fiving each other. We're so happy. And telehealth gets the medication for strokes to the patients in time. So, strong support. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kraft. Any other members in the room who'd like to testify? Dr. Lewin?
Dr. Lewin, State Health Planning and Development. I'm the chair of Aloha Chair and Vice Chair and members. We—I apologize, our testimony somehow did not make it in, but we stand in support of this. We believe that an in-person visit with—a relationship with your clinicians is the ideal thing, but telehealth has really helped us in many ways improve health care, and will need it in the future to extend care to people, particularly in remote areas. So thank you.
Any other members in the room? Any members on Zoom? Members, questions?
I have a quick question.
Sure.
I—I believe this might be for HAH and possibly for Department of Health. You know, we had such a successful working group, I believe, and maybe Dr. Koenig might be able to answer this. We had such a successful working group for the Stroke Telehealth Project. I believe it came through a working group that was facilitated. Was it facilitated by HAH and via a resolution like the one that we've done?
Yeah, I believe that's the Stroke Network of Care Group, and that group was meeting within the HAH sort of oversight. We provided a lot of administrative work, but much of the clinical and decision-making work was done by the providers, led by Dr. Koenig and many of his colleagues. I—I would say that that particular entity has not met as much since the pandemic. I think a lot of the work that they set out to do was really completed. I don't want to say completed isn't the right word, but I think seen through. There's been a lot of changes to telehealth policy, though, over the course of the pandemic. Yeah.
I'm not—I'm not disagreeing that we need to move this forward. I'm trying to figure out what the best structure for this was because I remember that HAH took a role in convening, and you had members from the legislature participate.
Yeah.
But we were not—and so I guess if we were to look at an amendment where we asked HAH to convene this versus the two chairs of the House and Senate Health Committees, it may actually go smoother. Would your—and you know, I—I would ask that you—maybe you consider being in the convening role. Because I think it could actually work better, given the success we saw with the Stroke Working Group.
Yeah. And—and what I will say, and I will not look at at my boss before agreeing to anything, that is a role that we've taken on in the past. We do serve in a convening role. This is a topic that is very beneficial to our members, and if that's something that—
He might come and do it himself.
Yeah, we can—we can see.
We would be very happy to support this initiative. Thank you.
Thank you. And separately, Lauren Kim from Department of Health. You folks have been convening regularly a telehealth working group within Department of Health, correct?
Prior to the pandemic, Dr. Pressler—the director Pressler at the time identified this as a strategic priority. And we pushed along Act 226 and a lot of those measures. During the pandemic, the community, the telehealth hui, really kind of called themselves to order. And my office was doing other things. So the real community leadership has come from PPTRC, quite frankly, Dr. Higa, who has sort of led the way and created space for these conversations to take place during the pandemic. So we still have some activities related to telehealth, and to the extent that the legislature and Dr. Fink would like us to expand those, we are very open to that.
Okay. I think what I'm most interested in is we get the—the working group structure of this correct, and that I'll work with the Vice Chair, and maybe we, like, really look at what the correct— who the correct convener may be to make this most effective. And so I appreciate that the work—the work that the Department of Health has been doing, really, this kind of collaboration between private sector, community, and state government really helped us get through the pandemic in ways that we, you know, we benefited from the work of the Stroke Telehealth Working Group that that was convened way before the pandemic was even there.
We were very fortunate that the combined community efforts to pass Act 226 and its predecessor happened just before the pandemic. So we were—you know, obviously, the governor could have just declared an EP, but we had started the process of socializing the idea, making people comfortable, making providers comfortable, getting payers on board, to the—to the point where we had the most progressive telehealth policy in the nation. So we're very proud of that. And again, whatever the—your committee decides is the best way to go about this, we're happy to be a part of it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kim. Thank you, Chair.
Members, any other questions? Okay. Moving on to HCR 144, requesting the Hawaii Medical Association and Hawaii Psychiatric Medical Association to convene a roundtable to establish medical protocols to ensure that an individual's thyroid function is tested before psychotropic medications for mental illness are prescribed. First up, we have Hawaii Disability Rights Center. Mr. Urshak.
Good morning, Representative, and thank you for hearing this measure. And a special thanks, Representative Amato, for the nice discussions that we had when we were looking to get this measure introduced. I'm Lou Urshak. I'm the Director of the Disability Rights Center. So you'll hear this morning from Pauline Aralano, who is a longtime member of my Board of Directors about the issues that she has had with her daughter who has a mental illness. So Pauline first brought this issue up in one of our meetings, talking about how—how at one time, her daughter was having severe issues, and then the doctor tested her thyroid level and found that, in fact, that had a lot to do with her behavioral problems. And—and that once that was adjusted, she didn't need as much in terms of psychotropic medication. So we—so we've—we've been looking for ways to try to enhance the discussion. And because I do a lot of work at the legislature, I thought, well, I know you can't legislate medical practice, obviously. But it occurred to me that—that a resolution suggesting that the Hawaii Medical Association and a psychiatric association get together and discuss these things—I mean, because I'm a lawyer and not a doctor, I mean, I'm not an expert. But I did some reading, and apparently, this is supposed to be kind of the protocol. And I know I spoke to some people about it and who—who felt that normally that is what happens, but perhaps primary care physicians maybe do it more than if somebody just goes to a psychiatrist and presents with mental health issues, they just go to psychotropic medication. Whereas a primary care physician perhaps might have a more integrated way of approaching it. And so it just seems to me that if we can somehow get people together—I was hoping maybe people from those organizations would be here today, or perhaps we can talk to Dr. Lewin or Hilton Rathel, people who—you know, we just want to get the conversation going because we certainly agree that psychotropic medication can help a lot of people. But at the same time, if it's not needed, then it's not needed. And if it's something else, it's something else. And if it's counterproductive, it could have all kinds of other effects. So we appreciate the opportunity to have a discussion, and we hope you can support the measure. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is a picture of my daughter. I would like for you to—picture of my daughter. I would like for you to keep her in mind as I tell you this story. I'm so nervous, excuse me. Dear committee, thank you for allowing me to testify today regarding HCR 144, thyroid testing. I can't make anyone do anything, but you can. I belong to many fine organizations. I am a board member of the Hawaii Disability Rights Center. I am the current Chair of the Protection and Advocacy for Individuals with Mental Illness, Pammy. Until recently, I was a member of the Patient Protection Committee at the Hawaii State Hospital. I do not speak for any of them. My thoughts and opinions are my own. I sent you a brief version of the horror my family has been through when lithium was prescribed for a thyroid condition. It started in middle school, really bad acne. Every dermatologist, every medicine, even freezing treatments, and nothing worked. School for her was a nightmare. No one ever wants to take their loved one to a psychiatric hospital, but sometimes professional help is needed. My mother and sister dragged us to Castle for help. I didn't understand. My daughter belongs in jail. The violence and the screaming was unbearable. The police were at our home so often that I knew the beat officers by name. They were often called for a welfare check because my daughter's yelling and screaming that we were killing her needed to be checked on. They were all very polite. I showed them the medicines that we were giving her and asked them for guidance. And all they could tell me was, hide the knives. It was at Castle that she was diagnosed as being bipolar, and I was relieved that there was a reason for all of this. relieved that there was a reason for all of this because, and it wasn't because I was a bad mother. The medicines worked for a while, then the behavior continued. I briefly described her stay on one visit to Kahii. They put her in an isolation cubicle behind the nurses' station because my daughter was making crazy people crazy. When we visited that evening, she was in the process of decorating the window with some awful stuff. The next day, they had to open a special ward just for her. We visited that night, and she was in four-point restraints. There are few things more horrible than to see your loved one restrained like a wild animal. Next day, while visiting, I was greeted by the fire department. After they released my daughter from the restraint device, she shoved it up against the door to her room. The doors opened in, and it wouldn't budge. The door had to be removed. There was a very nice young man who worked in her ward, and he was about the size of Arnold Schwarzenegger. She attacked him. She was absolutely fearless. They gave her so much medicine, and nothing worked. They gave her enough medicine to put a horse to sleep, nothing. They had to get special permission to give her any more medicine. Finally, they achieved zombie, and they sent her home. You would not believe me if I told you I would prefer all of the above as to what happened next. Six months later, Castle, new doctor, new medicines, lithium and Prozac. Eight days later, she was a vegetable, no movement at all. All of her joints were stiff. Her tongue was curled up in the back of her mouth. It took three of us just to feed her. One had to pry her jaw open. One had to flatten her tongue. One had to spoon-feed her liquid food. God sent me an 80-year-old woman from Sri Lanka. She taught me how to massage every muscle and joint in her body. This 80-year-old woman got on the bed with her, threw her leg over her shoulder to rotate her hips. She drilled into my brain that I could not let her muscles atrophy. Every day, I would crank up the temptations and massage her for hours. I was a broken mess. I wrote to everyone, asking, is this going to be forever? I wrote to the author of Toxic Psychiatry, Dr. Peter Brigham. I didn't expect a reply. He and his wife wrote me the most gracious, beautiful letter. He told me that he had been in the business for over 40 years, and everyone who he had treated with my daughter's condition came out of it. He threw me a lifeline. He told me if I couldn't-- If I couldn't find a doctor for her here, he'd set me up with one in San Francisco. He gave me hope when no one else would. All they kept telling me was, put her away. The doctor who did this to her dropped us as a patient. No psychiatrist on this island would take her as a patient, none. She qualified for state help. I was pissed. My husband and I worked for our entire life. How could this happen? I wheeled her into the Wahihua Clinic. Dr. Douglas Cooper walked up to her. He touched her face and her hair, and he said, I don't agree with her diagnosis. She has a thyroid condition. She was on tons of lithium. She had to be weaned off gradually. After eight months of being a vegetable, weaning her off the lithium and constant therapy, one day, she began to worm on the floor like a baby does, just before they learn to crawl. I cried, and I cried, and I cried, but this time, it was happy tears because finally, there was movement. She can now walk, talk, feed, and dress herself. I brought up the severe acne earlier, and that too is caused by the thyroid. It causes an overproduction of the oil glands to the face. I can't make anyone do anything, but you can. Please don't let this horror happen to another family. Take this resolution and run with it. Test everyone that's arrested, every prisoner, everyone admitted to the state hospital. Currently, not everyone gets a blood test upon admission to the state hospital. I personally believe this to be gross incompetence. They are professionals. How can you begin to treat anyone if you do not know what is in their system? Don't let another baby be thrown over the bridge to die on the freeway. Don't let another mother be beaten to death by her loved one. It's possible to have both bipolar and thyroid, but first, there needs to be testing. Clinical labs, $58. It has now been 16 years since her last psychiatric hospitalization. I can't make anyone do anything. You have this power. Mahalo Nui Loa. I am Pauline Aralano, and I am a mother on a mission. Thank you.
Thank you.
And today's paper, Letters to the Editor, titled "Bad Mix of Psychotropic Beds and Thyroid Conditions," Pauline Aralano.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing your story. We have three other individuals who testified in support, if any of them are available. Any other members of the public? Ms. Awa.
Sadly, I am the evidence, and I don't know if Pauline's going to be my friend after this. Okay, I've done all the things she's done in the different organizations, but I was sent to Washington, D.C. and learned from them, from SAMSA, okay? Yes, my issue was thyroids, but I was not told by the doctors that. I ended up in Queens Hospital when I was 30 years old. My mother had died the year before. I got married, had a divorce, left my job, and my family turned against me. That's trauma. We learn that, that that's trauma that happens in your life. And what ended up was, yeah, Queens, they moved me every night to a different room. The doctor was more confused than I was, and he was from the mainland. So, they also put me in a separate room, which they called the closed ward, and they actually knew my history. They're testing on us, okay, what we can and what we cannot do. The doctor didn't know what was wrong with me, and he told me that. And I told him, well, they said my brother is manic depressive because they threw him into prison and into Hawaii State Hospital. And my brother told me, they're only testing on me. He actually lifted up, like if you watch, one flew over the Cuckoo's Nest. Men like to challenge. He lifted up the toilet in the jail and broke it, okay? So, understand, men and women are different. And because we have the issue of bearing children, I didn't know until Roseanne came out with her show and talked about PMS, premenstrual cycle. This is what is affecting a lot of women, but men don't understand. And to have a man diagnose you, I don't know what's wrong with you. It doesn't matter that, it's not something wrong with us. It's what is happening in our life at the time. Yeah? So, I believe the medications, but I didn't want to take lithium either because I saw what was happening to my brother. He had purple cysts all over his body for taking it. Okay, he had the best doctors here. I, eventually, after four years, I did end up, oh, because I worked for HMSA, and I couldn't process more than 240 claims a day correcting doctors' medical codes so that they could get paid. Others that did not speak English and processed 350 claims a day and talked in front of me in a different language and treated me really badly, bragged to me how much they could do a day. So, I got depressed during Desert Storm, and I had to go see the biodyne doctor, which so happened to be the same doctor I saw at Queens, and he gave me Prozac, which flipped me so high. I completed 300 claims in three-fourths of the day. My supervisor had to take me into the HR and tell me, Ellen, but yours were accurate. They weren't coming back. So, if you can understand what the medical profession has been doing, the money is being eaten up on the top, and nothing is getting to the people that really need it. I didn't know what I was doing until just a couple of years ago, and I realized I was changing their medical codes for them so that they could get paid. Why couldn't they do it themselves? Why did HMSA do it?
Ms. Awa, sorry. If you could summarize your comments, we have a number of other resolutions.
Yeah.
And--
But anyway, to have these two organizations, I kind of disagree. I mean, you need more people like that, peer specialists, parents, and everything involved, because, no, these two groups, HMSA and Hawaii Psychiatric, the guy leading American psychiatric nationwide, okay, he's one of our head doctors here. So, if them, their two will be colluding, yeah? I'm sorry, you need other people in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your input. Any other members in the room who would like to, members of the public who would like to testify? Any members on Zoom? Thank you. Okay. Members, moving on to the next set of resolutions. This is HCR 182 and HR 162, requesting the auditor to assess the challenges to the timely delivery of healthcare services in the state due to prior authorization requirements and include an analysis of prior authorization reform with input of data and feedback from all stakeholders, including patient advocates, providers, facilities, and payers. First up, we have Office of the Auditor with comments. We have the State Health Planning and Development Agency, Dr. Lewin.
Chair, Vice Chair, members. Thank you. We support this resolution. I'd like to just suggest that there's the possibility of using technology to solve this problem if we decide to get very creative about it, because we really are basing decisions on medical standards and guidelines. They're available. And so, I think there may be a technological solution to help this problem because it's a hassle for everybody, doctors, hospitals, but also for the insurers. So, look forward to participating in this solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have HMSA in support. We have Hawaii Medical Association in support. Hawaii Radiological Society in support. Hawaii Association of Professional Nurses in support. Hawaii Provider Shortage Crisis Task Force in support. Ahaui Ona Ka'aka'o, Association of Native Hawaiian Physicians in support. And eight individuals all in support. Anyone else here wishing to testify? In the room or on Zoom, members' questions? Seeing none. We'll move on to the next set of resolutions, HCR 183 and HR 163, designating the month of May as postpartum depression awareness month in Hawaii.
Good morning.
Oh, sorry. One second. I'm just finding--
All right. Excited.
Oh, I didn't. There we go. Yeah. 183. Oh, sorry. Okay, yes. So many resolutions. Sorry. Sorry. First, sorry, Office of Wellness and Resilience?
Oh, no, no. For the postpartum depression?
In support. They're not present. Go ahead.
Ready?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair of the Committee. Aloha. I am here to testify that HCR 183 and HR 163 redesigning the month of May as postpartum depression awareness month in Hawaii. Actually, it's already recognized in mainland, so I am very eager to have it recognized here in Hawaii. By the way, I am Mirani Pabular Gajana. I am reigning Mrs. Universe. I represent Hawaii, USA, among 1+ women from all over the world. So, I am not just standing here as an individual, but I am representing all those women who are suffering from postpartum depression and all those women who want their voice to be heard. I personally suffered from postpartum depression, and I know how it feels. So, it's just not women, but also men who suffer silently. And there's a lot of them. They're suffering in silent because there's a lot of people who doesn't understand them, and they're scared that people will judge them. So, I want them to know that I am here, and I truly understand them, how it feels. So, I also work with Honolulu Mayor to have it recognized here in Hawaii in May. So, I'm hoping that things will move forward, and thank you so much for listening. Mahalo.
Thank you. Members, that's all the testimony we received. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Any members on Zoom? Members' questions? Hearing none. Moving on to the next set of resolutions, HCR 185, HR 165, requesting the Department of Health to conduct a study to examine whether bedhold policies place an undue financial burden on individuals in assisted living facilities. We have Healthcare Association of Hawaii with comments. Thank you. We also have testimony from the Department of Health in opposition.
Lauren Kim, Policy Officer for DOH. We respectfully oppose this measure. The concurrent resolution requests us to investigate undue financial hardship, and that's completely out of scope for the Department of Health. It's reasonable to conclude, as I read in my testimony, that anything short of free or as cheap as possible is going to be a response. Whether I can afford it or not, I'd always rather want to pay less. So, I don't think it would produce any meaningful data. That said, the department is open to a conversation about whether these policies affect patient safety, but we are not in the business of looking into undue financial hardship. So, we have licensing programs in place that assure patient safety, and perhaps under that rubric, this public policy discussion can go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the testimony we received, members. Anybody else in the room wishing to testify? Ms. Awa.
This is 186, right? Ellen Awa, okay. On the mainland, many people go to Canada to buy their medications.
Oh, sorry. This is the bedhold policy?
185. 185 is about, okay, Department of Health to conduct study to bedhold. Well, bedholds can be difficult because if they're holding beds for other people, this is what we're talking about, right? Yeah, and the people not coming in, but there's other people already coming in. So, yeah. And I went to Queens. The first time I went, when I was 30 years old, they told me there was no beds on the island.
This is about bedhold policies in assisted living facilities specifically?
Oh, okay. Well, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Members, any questions? Or anybody else on Zoom wishing to testify? Members, any questions? Moving on to the next set of resolutions. This is HCR 186 and HR 166, urging the Department of Health to explore avenues to ensure continued access to affordable medications for the state's underserved populations under the 340B drug pricing program, and urging Hawaii's congressional delegation and relevant federal agencies to monitor pharmaceutical companies and take appropriate actions to protect integrity of the 340B drug pricing program. First up, we have the Queens Health System in support. Thank you. Next, we have the Hawaii Primary Care Association in support.
Hi, Eric Abbe for the Hawaii Primary Care Association. The HPC is in strong support of these measures and offers friendly amendments for your consideration. The 340B program was established by Congress to provide discounts for prescription drugs to our country's most vulnerable populations. It is paid for solely by drug manufacturers. It does not utilize any tax dollars. This program is vital for the sustainability of federally qualified health centers. We are required by law to utilize these savings for either expanded services to medicate patients or reduce co-pays for medications. Because of ambiguities in the law, manufacturers and pharmacy benefit managers have utilized-- have utilized predatory practices, such as mandatory surcharges and administrative fees, to shift these savings away from hospitals and FQHCs, making it impossible for the 340B program to operate as it was intended by Congress. This is happening across the nation. The 340B issue has found itself into television campaign ads for the presidential primary in West Virginia. This is happening in Hawaii, too. In recent years, there have been efforts to prohibit these predatory practices under state law. These efforts have failed. The problem has become so bad that Medicaid administrators in California and Massachusetts have stopped all 340B reimbursements for Medicaid patients. If that were to happen in Hawaii, FQHCs would have to scale back services to patients, and medications will become more expensive for patients. For these reasons, the HBCA urges your favorable consideration of these measures and offers friendly amendments to clarify the role of FQHCs on this issue.
Thank you. Next, we have Healthcare Association of Hawaii.
Good morning, Vice Chair, Chair, members of the committee. Thank you for the opportunity to register our support. We share many of the same issues that our friends at the federally qualified health centers have regarding this program and several of the very concerning restrictive practices that pharmaceutical companies and drug manufacturers have put on this really, really important program. For the hospital side, we have 15 hospitals in Hawaii who count as 340B eligible entities. Those entities are serving low-income patients. They are serving rural communities. And the restrictions, in particular, put on the use of contract pharmacies have been very difficult for those who live in rural areas of Oahu and for folks from the neighbor islands who might be seeking care on Oahu or in perhaps one of the more populous areas on one of the neighbor islands but do reside in a more rural area of the state. We do want to note that this is a national issue. A lot of times, we hope that we will be shielded from some of these really difficult actions that we see from these pharmaceutical companies. But it has hit Hawaii. It is directly affecting our safety net hospitals here in the state, and we do hope that the legislature does take action and passes this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Waihawa Health Center in support. And YNI Coast Comprehensive Health Center on Zoom.
Mahalo, Chair. Ian Ross here, testifying on behalf of the YNI Coast Comprehensive Health Center. We stand on our written testimony in support, concurring with the friendly amendments recommended by the HBCA. Thank you very much for this opportunity to testify.
Thank you. That's all the testimony we received. Is there anyone in the audience who'd like to testify?
Aloha, Chair. Apparently, my colleague's testimony did make it in. Certainly, the Department of Health has an interest in assuring that the 340B drug program expands access to much-needed critical vaccinations. We are skeptical that the Department of Health will be able to wield any influence on for-profit private companies whose revenues exceed the state's budget. We would recommend, respectfully recommend, amending the title of this measure to strike DOH and leave it to urging Hawaii's congressional delegation to apply, to take appropriate action to protect the integrity of the 340B pricing program. Thank you, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to testify?
Ellen Y. again. I can only speak for the underserved, right? I no longer take drugs, because the drugs that was given to me was ruining my liver and kidneys. I learned this in Washington, DC at SAMSA 25 years ago, that I live now in a senior community, and so many people take drugs. And because the drugs was upped, they no longer can afford the ones that they've been dependent on, their heart disease medications. And so they're being charged 400-plus every time to pick up. So, yes, I support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members in the room wishing to testify? Any members on Zoom? Members, questions?
I have a question for HH. This is a very concerning issue. So I'm very glad it's being raised through a resolution. In your testimony, there are other states have advanced legislation. I am skeptical of the Department of Health skepticism that they can't do anything to protect our patients from the high rising rates of pharmaceuticals that could then threaten the sustainability of our hospitals and our healthcare system. So is there, are there ways in which Department of Health may be able to help with this effort of looking at ensuring continued access to affordable medications?
Sure. And I will say that we can speak more, I think, with our colleagues at the Department of Health to make sure that we have avenues that we can use to go back to the drug manufacturers. I believe that in partnership, perhaps also with the insurance commissioner and other folks, because a lot of states have involved, their insurance commissioners also in these programs. I think that in collaboration with DOH and with other stakeholders who are involved in this, we can find a way to make sure that we are holding drug manufacturers responsible for making sure they're providing this benefit.
I think we have to use all of the state tools that we have and mechanisms we have. And maybe we don't know fully what those are, but I would push back on any skepticism, because it's going to take a kind of effort to address high cost of healthcare. And I appreciate that, you know, the health sector partners who came forward to point this out to us, because this was not on my radar screen personally, but it is something that I understand affects, you know, it's so high level that we don't see it, but it is affecting access to healthcare for the community. Thank you, Ms. Choi. If I could ask Mr. Abbe to comment on this, just briefly, because we do still have a few more resolutions.
In order to address the 340B program, it's going to be vital to get the Department of Human Services involved. And the main reason why is because, you know, as far as processing the reimbursements are concerned. I mean, ultimately, it's the Medicaid administrators that are going to have to work through how the savings will actually get to the FQHCs, among other things. And as noted in our testimony, the blowback from this, especially from the pharmaceutical manufacturers, has been so great. It's created an administrative nightmare in some of these other states, to the point where the states of California and Massachusetts have basically said, we're not going to touch 340B.
So from what I'm hearing from your testimony is that we really need to involve the Department of Human Services, possibly the Department of Health, as well as the insurance commissioner?
Yeah. And that's why we suggest in our friendly amendments that it be directed to the governor, so that the governor would be able to then make sure that all of the other cabinet members are on the same page and willing to do this. I mean, ultimately, it's going to take political will. And what we hope to do, all of our partners, is actually try to galvanize the political will by the administration to address this issue.
Thank you, Ms. Abbe.
Thank you, Chair.
Members, any other questions? Seeing none. Moving on to the next set of resolutions. This is HCR 187 and HR 167, requesting the Department of Health to convene a healthcare facilities labor standards working group to research, assess, and make recommendations on the best practices in labor standards that can be implemented at hospitals, care homes, and dialysis facilities in the state. First up, we have Board of Nursing. Comments, thank you. We have the Hawaii State Center for Nursing on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Thank you for hearing this resolution. The Hawaii State Center for Nursing wishes to recognize the importance of this topic, safe nursing staff, excuse me, safe nursing standards are certainly a critical discussion. And we also support the Board of Nursing's recommendation for an LRB study. Aloha.
Thank you. We have Healthcare Association of Hawaii.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee, thank you for the opportunity to testify and provide comments with strong concerns on this resolution. There are major issues facing our industry in recruiting and retaining the workforce we need to care for our aging population. HH and its members, along with education institutions across the state, have invested material amounts of time and money into this issue with success, and we continue to make these investments. Implementing policies like nurse staffing ratios will not solve our shortages. They do, however, have the potential to decrease access to care. California passed the nurse-patient-staff ratio law in 1999, went into effect in 2004. Their law has been in effect for 20 years, and it has not solved their nurse-staff shortages. California currently has an R in vacancy rate of 10%. And California consistently ranks lower than Hawaii on health outcomes. The Healthcare Association of Hawaii is very supportive of continued investment in healthcare education in our public high schools, communities, and universities. It is very frustrating that we have qualified students from Hawaii who moved to the mainland for nurse training because of a lack of openings in our nurse training programs here in Hawaii. We do not believe the working group is defined in this resolution as the most appropriate path forward. We are very supportive of this study completed by an independent party. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Health Systems Corporation providing comments. Thank you. We have Hawaii Nurses Association Local 50 in support.
Hello, I'm Rosalie Agus Yu. I'm the president of HNA. Thank you very much for listening. We do support this very much so. And I just want to keep it short, because we had almost 600 nurses on the strike line, and that meant a lot. It meant that it's so important. And we're worried that if we don't do anything for three years from now, you're not going to have nurses at all. Very little and very inexperienced. We have more contracts opening up in the next year or so, and they're all saying the same thing. So it's not, it's not just one hospital saying it. It's everybody. Everybody in the state, everybody in the nation, everybody internationally. So I'm so very happy and pleased that we are looking at this and really support this very much. So thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. We have Private Work Hawaii in support. Hawaii State AFL-CIO in support. UPW in support. Local 665 in support. We have Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii on Zoom. Sailors Union of the Pacific in support. We have late testimony from Department of Health in opposition.
Good morning, Lauren Kim, Policy Officer, Department of Health. I respectfully oppose the measures drafted, though we certainly acknowledge the importance of some of the issues that it brings up. Our opposition is based on some of the significant jurisdictional concerns that we have. The most modest being the convening agency, which is the Department of Health, but it's being chaired by a board from another agency. Most critical for us is what's under, what's supposed to be taken under consideration by this task force is subject to collective bargaining, and that's not the purview of DOH. We can be there to be consultant, to be consultative, to bring a consultative capacity on patient safety and hospital licensing and accreditation standards. But how long and how frequent meal breaks, rest breaks, and overtime standards may relate to licensing or accreditation, but only indirectly. And again, we have significant concerns about the jurisdictional issues and the impact to collective bargaining and as it relates to private sector entities and government resources being used to facilitate discussions on private labor relations. We have some other comments about staffing ratios related to care homes and dialysis centers. And I'll leave it at that and be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have late testimony from HGA with comments. Members, we also have about 13 individuals who provided testimony in support or with comments. Are any of them wishing to testify?
Thank you. My name is Joan Kraft. I am a staff nurse in Hawaii for 26 years, a registered nurse for 32, active, practicing the whole time at the bedside. I want to make sure, like, we brought this forward as a bill. I mean, we, a group of everybody, brought this forward as a bill, and it got turned into a resolution. And I don't want to then just have it continue to be pressed down, find all the excuses not to actually do this. It's important. All of us will either be a patient or have a loved one be a patient, unfortunately. And the care that they receive is actually dependent on the number of people who are able to care for them. That's a real thing. To just say, oh, it doesn't matter. You can have one nurse take care of 30 patients? I don't have, I mean, you know, we don't even, a flight attendant, there's ratios, I mean, you know, they have rest times. The pilots have rest times. But you just want healthcare workers and nurses and nurse aides and probably, I think even residents now have a little limit on how many hours they're allowed to be awake. This is an actual patient safety issue. And of course, this group of people, a group of interests that are going to come up with every reason in the book to say, oh, no, oh, no, oh, no, oh, no. Let's find another way. The bottom line is, the numbers of people doing a job affects their ability to do a job. And this job is human beings that are sick. And, you know, it's not something that we can just, we're not shoveling, cleaning out a stall, right? Mucking a horse stall, right? It's not that. So it does matter. And I really thank you guys for this resolution, and we're in full support. And that's it. Mahalo.
Thank you, Ms. Kraft. Anybody else in the room?
Ellen Y. Most of you know that I created the Hawaii Certified Peer Specialist Program from 2005 to 2009 under the Adult Mental Health Division, Department of Health. But the program was gotten rid of, okay? So I'm so glad that you folks put it into the package to the governor to include peer support specialists, because after COVID, all agencies are short on workers. We had an $11.2 million federal contract to improve the transformation of the mental health system, but that was wasted. It wasn't to improve people with mental health. It was to just supply the providers, okay? But it showed Hawaii was short. But the peer specialist program could have been for any kind of experience, lived experiences that I shared with my, the people I trained, over 150, then 220, after I was, well, total, after I was let go. I knew once Dr. Hester left that I would be terminated from my job, because he was the recovery model person. It wasn't the medical model. And I trained the veterans of the Pacific. They sent me to Michigan to retrain. I was sent to Georgia. I trained in Hawaii. I went to Washington, DC, learned everything, but I was told, oh, but you're a consumer with mental health issues. Why should we listen to you? You're going over the lieutenant governor's head who was going to SAMSA CMHS.
If you please summarize or keep your. If you could please summarize or keep your, thank you. Any other members on Zoom? Please go ahead and please identify yourself.
Hi, my name is Kathy. Aloha, Chair Valadi, Vice Chair and Committee members. My name is Kathy Young. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to speak to about my concerns and thoughts of why I strongly support HCR 187, which recommends establishing a Department of Health healthcare facilities labor standards working group. As someone who have been working in the health care system for over 30 years, my coworkers and I have been through many changes and have been forced to adapt through ups and downs. With all of the research and improvements in science, we've seen medicine advance where people are living longer and obtaining a better quality of life. However, on the opposite end, I witnessed a downward spiral of our qualified personnel and a system that continues to shake our commitment as workers to our common goal of better health care for all. Our society asks us to do our best and be our best, which we always strive for. However, our efficiency is halted in its tracks due to a lack of realism and human limitations. In most cases, if a group of people have a problem, then something should be said about it. However, it's this see-something, say-nothing mentality that has been making our staffing situation worse. But then, if you choose the other fork in the road, you decide to say something to management, and you watch yourself defend every aspect of your professional judgments, or even better, being told, "There's no one, and just do your best," only to continuously knock yourself out and see that you didn't achieve your best, but according to management, it will have to do. This scenario then ends with you regretting you ever said anything and end up making the staffing mentality worse. So as an example, let me tell you about the last shift I worked. We started, I worked night shift. We started with 13 patients and three RNs and two nurses aides scheduled. An RN was instructed to float to another floor, so we had two RNs and two CNAs and no unit clerk, because there wasn't enough unit clerks. We ended up being maxed out at seven patients each for each RN, because we got another patient that just had surgery right after shift change. After my coworker got reworked, she was asked to come down and pick up a post-operative patient who was on the second floor. As it was around 8:00 p.m. when this occurred, the transport team was not available since they leave at 4:00 to 5:00 p.m. The two recovery room nurses could not leave their posts because they were expecting another patient, so we sent a CNA to pick the patient up by himself. After he left our floor, there were five colleagues to tend to, thus creating an even more chaos and disorder. Later in the shift, a unit clerk came from another floor, because the nursing officer was trying to call us, but no one was answering the phone since we were attending to our patients at bedside. My charge called and was told, my charge nurse called and was told that there was a late sick call, which meant after 11:30 p.m., we would only have one CNA instead of the two. We were then asked to look at our two, to look for our two CNAs and to ask them if they were willing to stay overtime. Both of our CNAs declined. My charge nurse paged our nursing supervisor twice, and by the time that she called back, our evening shift CNAs went home and could not be mandated to stay. Regarding our breaks, my charge nurse had to page and ask the nursing supervisor to send someone to cover us. We needed an hour and a half coverage, but my charge nurse could only arrange with another floor to send an aide for one hour. The other med search floors that had two CNAs, one left at 4:30 a.m. because she was doing her overtime. Her shift is 3:00 p.m. to 4:30 a.m. At the end of the shift on our floor, the two of us tried to address this with our head nurse, but couldn't, because she was also filling in as a nursing supervisor, so she wasn't able to talk to us. There are other points I'd like to talk about why I really support HCR 187. My floor has a history of meeting with the Safe Staffing Committee many times, where the committee aides.
Ms. Young, I'm so sorry. If you would be able to summarize a little, we have to move to decision-making soon. Sorry about that. Could you summarize some of your comments?
Well, anyway, my testimony has been submitted, and then just my recent case that I talked to you about, I think shows a clear example of why we need help. And I appreciate your time, and actually, we appreciate your time, we appreciate your help.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much for sharing your experiences with us. Okay, members, any questions? Seeing none, moving on to the last resolution. This is HR 225, requesting the auditors conduct a social and financial assessment of proposed mandatory health insurance coverage for step-therapy requirements for stage 2 through stage 5 cancer. We have one piece of testimony in support from an individual or a figure. Any late testimony from people in the room? Any members on Zoom? Nobody to ask questions to, so we will recess for decision-making.
Members, we're going to just grab the voting sheets and we convening our 10 a.m. agenda for health and homelessness, as well as our 10:30 a.m. members. First up, Senate Bill 2322 relating to water quality. Chair's recommendation is to, this already has a defective date, so this is pass as is, pass as is. Members, questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 2322, SD 1, HD 1, Chair's recommendation is pass as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Amato.
Aye.
Representative Iligon.
Aye.
Representative Kobayashi is excused. Representative Martin.
Aye.
Representative Nishimoto.
Aye.
Representative Garcia.
Aye.
Chair, recommendations adopted.
Members, SB 2461 relating to medical cannabis, this already has a defective date. Chair's recommendation is to pass this as is, pass as is. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on SB 2461, SD 2, HD 1, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Kobayashi. Are there any reservations? Any noes? Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Vice Chair passing the gavel to you for the 10:30 a.m. agenda.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, we will be taking decision-making on a bunch of the resolutions we just heard. Okay, first up, we have HCR 5, HR 1. This is the Women's Legislative Caucus, resolutions about access to contraceptives. Recommendation is to pass as is. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Chair for the vote.
Members, this is the vote for HCR 5 and HR 1 to pass unamended. Chair, Vice Chair votes aye. Rep. Amato.
Aye.
Rep. Iligon.
Aye.
Rep. Kobayashi excused. Rep. Martin.
Aye.
Rep. Nishimoto.
Aye.
Rep. Garcia.
No vote.
Okay. Chair, your recommendation passes.
Thank you. Moving on to HCR 6, our second Women's Legislative Caucus member, measure, recommendation is to pass as is. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Chair for the vote.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HCR 6 unamended, noting the excused absences of Representative Kobayashi. Any reservations? Any noes?
No vote.
Chair, your recommendation passes.
Thank you. Moving on to HCR 71, HR 56, about health care language access. We're going to be passing with an amendment to add HH to the working group per their testimony request. And that's it. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Chair's recommend, Chair's recommendation is to pass HCR 71, HR 56, with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Kobayashi. Any reservations? Any noes? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation passes.
Next, HCR 116, HR 97, about the safe parking program. Was hoping to get some input from the Honolulu Youth Commission, since they were not able to do so, recommended to defer. Moving on to HCR 125, HR 106. Members, we're going to defer decision-making to next week, March 27th, at an 11:15 a.m. agenda, defer decision-making till next week, the 27th, 11:15 in this room, 329. Moving on to HCR 144, about thyroid testing, Chair's recommendation is to pass as is. Any questions, comments, or concerns?
Great comment, please.
Yes.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to thank the introducer, Representative Chen, for this resolution. This one's perfect, personal to me. Thank you, Lou, for your comments and your testimony, and my apologies to Pauline, I believe her name was, because I walked out as she was testifying. This bill is so personal. My own daughter is currently in a hospital in Iowa because of hypothyroid psychosis, so thank you for hearing this.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, Chair for the vote.
For HCR 144, pass unamended, with noting the excused absence of Representative Kobayashi. Any noes? Any reservations? Seeing none, your recommendation passes.
Next, HCR 182 and HR 162, again, we're going to move these to our March 27th, 11:15 a.m. agenda in this room. Next set of resolutions, HCR 183, HR 163, we will pass as is. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Hearing none, Chair for the vote.
Chair's recommendation for HCR 183 and HR 163 is to pass unamended, noting the excused absence of Representative Kobayashi. Any noes? Any reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation passes.
Thank you. Next, HCR 185, HR 165, this is about the bedhold policies, noting the concerns about Department of Health, and having had some additional conversation with HH about this, recommendations to defer at this time. Next set of resolutions, HCR 186, HR 166, again, we're going to move this to our March 27th, 11:15 a.m. agenda. Next set of resolutions, HCR 187, HR 167, about the working group for labor standards. Appreciate all the members who came out to talk about the situation. At this time, recommendation is to change this to a study by the Legislative Reference Bureau. Some of the things we'll look at in the study is best practices on staffing and workforce development, including safe staffing guidelines, links to staffing and, links to staffing with patient safety and workplace safety outcomes, and also best practices for maybe other states, particularly in the western region, about how they're dealing with workforce shortages and solutions for those issues. Yes. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Members? Okay, hearing none, Chair for the vote.
Chair's recommendation for HCR 187 and HR 167 is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Kobayashi. Any noes? Any reservations?
No vote.
No vote by Representative Garcia. Any reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation passes.
Thank you. Last measure, HCR 225, recommendation is to pass as is. Any questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Chair for the vote.
Chair's recommendation is to pass HCR 225 unamended as is, noting the excused absence of Representative Kobayashi. Any other noes? Any reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation passes.
Okay, thank you. We're adjourned.